Okay, good evening. This is the April 28th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We're meeting this evening remotely as allowed by the law from the Governor's Declaration of a State of Emergency. So we're doing things a little bit differently than we usually do. So everyone be with me. I have to read a couple of pages of how this works. So so this is Marist Apollo, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. I need to confirm that all the members and persons who expect to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. So I'm going to call your names off. And when I do respond yes or whatever, so we know you're here. So Beth Cassavan.
Present.
John LeBeau.
Present, Mr. Chairman.
Jim Kane.
Present, Mr. Chairman.
John Samia.
Present.
Okay, Kevin Mizuka.
Present.
Sandy Wright. I can see you, Sandy.
Yep.
Okay.
Present.
Thank you. Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, we have some speakers tonight, at least potential speakers. Victor De Oliveria. Or Anna Carolina. Okay, they had asked for a continuance. So, okay, all right. Price Chopper folks, we have like four or five of you, right?
Four.
Okay, so we have James Carlson.
They're present, James.
Okay, Lisa Durant.
Present.
Uh, was it Terry?
Present as well.
Okay, Enrique Miller.
Present.
Okay, and Terry, as I got the name, last name wrong, I'm sorry. Terry? Terry, Terry?
Terry Teraferma.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, this is an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. The current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Excuse me. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as the as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public asset access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Hangouts as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take and take care not to share screen on your computer unless asked by the chairperson or staff person. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. So I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for a particular item or a guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then a second. So please hold until your name is called. Also, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking and background noise. So please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. And remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After your presentation, members of the board will be given the opportunity to ask questions. So for our public comment, if we do have any of that this evening, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford the public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all the public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford up to three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote will be taken, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay, having said all that, let's move down to the agenda items. Could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay, thank you. Item two is to approve the minutes of the April 4th, 14th meeting. Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, your motion is second. Are there any further discussion on that? Are they being on? And Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay. Item three is announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements this evening? Okay, so let's move on to.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, we did receive, we have a notice in our packet just that the simple recycling, the pink bag recycling has resumed as of Monday, April 27th.
Right, right, thank you. I forgot about that. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay. Next item is a town management report. Mr. Mizuka, do you have anything this evening?
I do for both the general report and the COVID-19 update.
Okay, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to update the board with regards to the campus plans for the municipal campus and police station project. Design work continues under the direction and oversight of public building staff, the chief of police, the town manager's office. And we've progressed to near the end of the programming, which is the phase to determine all aspects that should be under consideration and included within a new police station. And that brings us to an estimated bulk square footage for a potential new structure of around 38,000 square feet. Again, this is just highly conceptual and based upon the needs that have been identified by the police department for what should be included in the new building. Myself, along with the Selco Commission, have progressed through two rounds of interviews for the selection of a new general manager. And the Commission has scheduled a meeting, which I will participate in tomorrow at 1:00 for the potential vote to make an offer to one of the final candidates. There's been a great candidate pool, a lot of strong internal candidates. Very pleased to see that from within the organization and I look forward to that meeting tomorrow. And then finally, just a quick note on the Beal project. Construction continues. A lot of great progress is being made with regards to the building and it's really taken shape. If you're out and about, you can certainly take a look off of Lake Street. A lot of progress continues to be made and we still remain on schedule and within the budget for the project. Moving on to the COVID-19 update, as of today, there are 161 positive cases within the community. 55 cases, positive cases have been identified within the last seven days at an average of 7.85 cases per day. I'll remind the board that over the prior two seven-day periods, we averaged 5.4 cases per day. So we're certainly seeing an increase in average number of cases reported per day. The governor at his press conference at noon today reported that the state is seeing a plateau while numbers are still very high. The number of hospitalizations and utilization of ICU beds has leveled off and we're all looking forward to a decline in the trend in hopefully the coming days and weeks ahead. Along with that announcement, the governor provided additional directive with regard to nonessential businesses and gatherings over 10 being prohibited. And the businesses being closed until May 18th and therefore all town buildings will remain closed to the public until at least May 15th, which is a Friday. And internally this week, we established a team or a task force to develop plans for phased restaffing and reopening of town buildings. And we're in the process of considering a similar task force to lead the redevelopment of the town budget process. That's all I have this evening.
I couldn't turn my mic back on. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the managers, members of the board? Okay, then we'll move on to, excuse me, to item six. We have a continued public hearing with Victor De Oliveria, owner of iCar Auto on 306 Boston Turnpike for a Class II license. Mr. De Oliveria asked for a continuance. They haven't been able to get the information yet, or at least not all together that we asked for at the last meeting. So I'd ask for a continuance on this hearing until our May 12th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay. So our next order of business, excuse me, is a continued public hearing with Keith Wyndham, proposed manager for 81 Clinton Pub, doing business as Billy's Pub at 81 Clinton Street. Also because of the crisis with the virus and the executive order, they're not able to get some of the work done they need to get done. So they've also asked for a continuance. So could we, could I have a motion to continue that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay, I'm, we can move into the next item because it's a meeting, it's not a hearing. We have a meeting with Enrique Miller, proposed manager for Price Chopper, Operation Company of Massachusetts. DBA Price Chopper number 229733 Boston Turnpike for a change of manager to their all alcohol package store license. So who will be the lead person to speak for Price Chopper? Price Chopper folks?
Sorry, I'm James Carlson, I'm the district manager. I can speak.
Okay, this, this is pretty routine. It's just a change of manager. Nothing else is changing in the operation, right?
Correct.
Okay, but do you have anything that you want to add?
No, sir.
So let me ask some questions for members of the board. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Does Mr. Miller have experience managing a store in the Wicker area in particular? Mr. Carlson?
Enrique has been managing the Price Chopper now for the, since December. Prior to that, he ran a store in, down in Georgia, which also had alcohol. But as far as his experience with Massachusetts, it's been since December of 2019.
Okay, anything else, members of the board? Mr. Mizuka? No? Okay. Then if we don't need any more information, I would entertain a motion to appoint Enrique Miller to the manager with the, of Price Chopper 733 Boston Turnpike for the manager for the all alcohol package store license.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay, well, Mr. Miller, you're all set. Paperwork will go to Boston to finalize that, but everything's good. So you folks are all set.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say while you're still here, you guys are doing a great job keeping the store clean and the things you're doing because of the virus. Several people have commented to me and I've been in the store myself and made note of how much effort you're putting in to keep the place clean. So, and safe. So thank you very much and keep up the good work.
Much appreciated. Thank you for that.
Okay, all right, next order of business. To review and act on the 2020 garage license renewals. Everything is ready to go on those as they are listed on, on our agenda except for was the sand and gravel? Had two garage licenses, one on 182 Holden Street and one on 146. This, the licensing getting ready for it happened while the, the sale of the land was going through. So those, those licenses are not being applied for and the new owners will be making an application for both those locations again under the new name. But other than that, unless anybody has any questions, that is the slate as we have it. Any comments? Questions? Okay, I didn't take a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay, next order of business is to vote to renew dealer of precious metals licenses as attached to our list. I'm told that these are in good form and they are ready to go. So does anybody have any questions? If not, I entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay, thank you. The next order of business is to review and act to set the 2020 Annual Town Election Date in accordance with Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020. As you recall, we voted to postpone the election from the originally scheduled May 5th to a date that we were going to determine later. We're at the later. We need to set a new date before the next, before the 5th, right, Mr. Mizuka?
Yes, that's correct, before the originally scheduled date.
Okay, so we'll open this up for discussion. Mr. Kane, I know you had an interest in a particular date. Would you like to talk about that?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I had offered holding this town election until the state election in November. I mentioned that several meetings ago and it appears that the constructs are not in place to allow such a vote to occur. So I will withdraw that.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Mizuka, you have the outline that you'd be proposing leading up to the election. So do you want to redo that? Or Mrs. Wright can do it, either one?
Yeah, I would be more than happy to walk through the timeline for that. I'm just need to open it up for myself to refer to. Okay. Sorry for that delay. So tonight, April 28th, the, we are proposing that the election be rescheduled to June 16th, 2020. June 16th is a Monday, I believe, excuse me, it's a Tuesday, a normally scheduled election on a Tuesday. And if the, if the Board of Selectmen would choose that date this evening, tomorrow, we'd begin, we'd begin right away under Sandy's leadership to give notice of the new election date to all residents, candidates and poll workers. And Sandy will request that the ballot begin to be printed by the printing vendor on or about May 1st. Public notices on availability for early and absentee ballots for every registered voter would be sent. Absentee and early ballots would be mailed out as requested between the period of May 6th and the date of the election, June 16th. June 5th would be the last day to register to vote. Again, the election would be June 16th and result, results would be certified potentially as early as June 17th. So there's, there's going to be ample notice provided and residents are going to be strongly encouraged to vote by mail. And that will obviously limit exposure at the polling places. And all due notice will be given to residents to provide that opportunity again from May 6th through the date of the election of June 16th.
Okay, questions for members of the board? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just add that under the next item on the agenda, I'm not trying to get ahead, but for purposes of your discussion, we would be proposing that, if I have this right. Yeah, through the warrant process, in case the board wants to discuss it now, hours for the election of noon to 8:00 PM, which is different than our normal schedule. But again, we're trying to limit poll worker exposure and hopefully a lot of residents take advantage of the early mail-in voting opportunities to reduce in-person voting.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, any questions or comments? None?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think that given the current environment with the virus and where we are and Baker having extended the stay-at-home order for another two weeks, that this is a prudent schedule and that it's pushing, I think, as far as we possibly can, the election date to make sure that it is safe for residents, as safe as it's going to be for residents to vote. I'm also very pleased that there's the opportunity to do early voting and absentee ballots. So people do not have to choose between their safety and their health and casting a ballot. So I, I think this is a, as good of a timeline as we're going to get, given the current situation and the uncertainties that lie within. So I would be in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
I mean, I just wanted to say I have no issue with the noon to 8:00 timeline. In fact, many smaller communities, I'm not sure of big communities, but in many small towns, that's routinely what's done. So it, and it works.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Wright, do you have anything that you want to add about the mechanics of the, what, how the election would work before we move on to a vote?
No, it would work the same as it always does. I was just hoping that you would vote to have it before June 30th because there's no restrictions on anyone voting by mail or after June 30th, all the restrictions go back into effect. And the ballots at the printer with the original date on it, just waiting for the go-ahead. All dates and deadlines from the original date apply except for the deadline to register to vote, which now gets moved up to 10 days before the election. And again, the registration sessions are shortened. Instead of having them from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, the last day to register to vote, we can go from 2:00 PM until 4:00 and then again, 7:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And another thing is our town elections in the past five years I looked, they've been very low turnouts. 2015 was 9%, 16% was 6%, 17, 21, 18, 9, and 19, 17. So we probably again, just really encourage people to vote by mail, get it out there on the web. Maybe we can put something in it into the, like Selco bills, we were thinking. Some kind of note with the new date on it and encouraging people to vote by mail. But we're totally in favor of doing this before June 30th.
Okay, and are you going to plan to use less poll workers as it's allowed?
Yes, I'm planning on, right now I'm thinking about four in each precinct. And like the town manager said, the reduced hours go 12 to noon.
Okay, any other questions or comments from members of the board?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, I have a question for the town clerk. Ms. Wright, I mean, it sounds, well, it's not what we usually ask or say, but should we, should we be encouraging people to bring in their own writing device? And if so, should we tell them exactly what they should bring? Or do we prefer making sure it's a device, it's, you know, a pen that, that the optical scanners can read? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, we actually ordered pens from our voting vendor. And what we thought was we could have one of our poll workers, when they enter the polling location, hand them a pen. They'll go vote. On the way out, they'll drop that pen in a, a box and there'll be a poll worker there to wipe them down, sanitize them. And also that same person would go into the booths and wipe those down as they enter. And hopefully we'd have like an officer for, to keep the social, the distancing, allow only so many in the polling place at one time and sanitize everything right after they leave the poll, before you let anyone else in when they leave the booth and their ink pens.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Wright, you're working with Assistant Town Manager Lasse on this, right? Working out all the details?
Yes, after, she said after we set the date tonight, tomorrow we'll start looking at what we need for supplies.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this? Okay, then actually I would entertain a motion to act and sign the warrant for the annual town election to be held on June 16th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mizuka?
Just out of abundance of caution, could we take 11 and 12 separately? And I'm sure I confused that by moving it to 12. But if you can vote to set the date first and foremost, I realize it isn't a warrant, but given the circumstances, I think we're better off.
Okay, so let's take that back. Will. Can someone make a motion to, to to have the annual town election on June 16th? to have the, the, uh, annual town election on June 16th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Um, Ms. Casavia?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, now, um, could I have a motion to sign the warrant for the annual town election to be held on June 16th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs. Casavia?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Samia?
Aye.
This is Apollo, aye. Okay, um, Mr. Mizuka, um, how are we signing the warrant? Electronically?
Um, we will route it through DocuSign, yes.
Okay, right, thank you. Um, item 13 is to review and act on the FY 2020 membership, um, and payment of the annual dues, um, for the 495 Metro West Partnership. Um, that's $500. Um, I think this has been a good, um, organization for us, and Mr. Mizuka, uh, Ms. Lass is involved in a, an officer position in that, I think?
Yeah, she's on the, yeah, she's an officer of the organization, yes.
Okay, so, um, yeah, obviously, the staff, the people who are doing the most with them, you, you do believe it's beneficial, right?
Yeah, it's definitely a huge, huge benefit to the town. Good value.
Okay, um, is there any other discussion or questions on that? Um, then, could I have a motion to, uh, vote to, um, pay the $500 membership fee and renew our membership to the 495 Metro West Partnership?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Casavia?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, thank you. Um, item 14 is to review and authorize the town manager to sign a grant application for a feasibility study for a regional emergency communications and dispatch. Mr. Mizuka, would you like to say anything about that?
Sure, um, a few weeks ago, uh, we were contacted by the town of Westboro, who, um, cited availability of state grant money through the, uh, State 911 system to, uh, secure up to $75,000 to cover the entire cost of a feasibility study for the towns to consider merging regional emergency communications, um, systems. Um, many towns in the, uh, region have done this. Um, I know Selectman LeBeau has been part of this, uh, when he was the town administrator for Princeton. I have been a part of a merger of, uh, emergency communications dispatch whenever I was the town administrator in Leicester with the city of Worcester. And, um, as you know, across the country, uh, dispatch is normally done on a much wider basis than municipality by municipality, whether it be on a county or sometimes a larger regional basis. So there's certainly the ability for the town to explore this at no risk and no commitment with at least the town of Westboro and potentially other towns in the region, um, and determine if it would indeed be feasible. Um, this is just the first step in a probably, um, multi-step and multi-year process to come to a determination and actually be able to move into that environment if we so choose, so. No commitment other than joining in and participating and sharing data and engaging in the process with the town of Westboro. I think they're a great partner, um, and, um, it's certainly worth exploring, utilizing the state funding and the state grant to do so.
Okay, thank you. Um, any board members have any questions on that or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
I just think it's, it's, uh, appropriate to investigate. It may not work for every town, but, uh, savings can be substantial. Uh, when I was in Princeton, by moving to regional dispatch with the state, um, assisting with outfitting the new dispatch center, our dispatching costs were reduced by more than 50%.
That would be nice. Um, okay, um, any, anything else on that? Then, could I have a motion to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kane?
Just one follow-up, uh, question. In many cases, there's a lot more that goes on at the particular physical location than just dispatching. So I would ask that the manager just keep that in mind to make sure it's an all-inclusive study of all the activities that aren't, are ongoing, and not simply the particular dispatch function. They still answer questions, people come in about, uh, license to carry, a whole host of other issues are dealt with, uh, by that position, and I would just want to make sure that that entire 360 view is taken of it, and not just the, the function of the emergency answering and dispatch.
Okay, thank you. Very good point. Um, Mr. Mizuka, can you tell if you have a comment or not?
No, I was just prepared to answer any questions, but, uh, understood Mr. Kane's comments, absolutely.
Okay, anyone else? Then, could I have a motion to authorize the manager to sign the grant application?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs. Casavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, thank you. Um, the next order of business is to review and act on the reappointment of the town manager, um, Mr. Mizuka, um, for a three-year term effective July 1, 2020, to June 30th, 2023. I think you all remember that, back in 2019, uh, we voted to, um, contract with Mr. Mizuka, um, for this time period, um, before his, his, uh, his current, uh, appointment was up, um, because we felt it was important for the continuity of the town benefit, um, both the town and Mr. Mizuka to give some stability, and obviously, um, we did it, um, with the belief that, um, Mr. Mizuka, um, has done a good job. Um, but, so the contract is signed, but the way our charter is written, we still need to vote the next three years, so, um, that's why this is on the agenda this evening, so, um, anybody have any questions, comments?
I just have a quick comment, yeah, um, just the, uh, I know this is more of a technical issue, but I think, I can attest during my first year, um, working with Mrs., Mr. Mizuka, it's been a true pleasure. Um, he's a real forward thinker. I think he's shown exceptional leadership during these unprecedented times, and I think that, um, having Mr. Mizuka at the helm over the next three years is, uh, puts us in the best position to get through this, so I, um, obviously, fully in favor of it.
Great, thank you. Um, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kane?
At the risk of giving the manager a, a big head, I would just like to reiterate my colleague's comments. I think he's done a great job. He's doing a great job, and we look forward to it. Another three years of high-quality performance, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Um, I, I would just echo those, those comments, and, um, I would say that, um, I've, I've enjoyed working, um, with you, Mr. Mizuka, and, um, I give you personally very high marks for the work that you and the staff have been doing through this, uh, crisis. Uh, keeping town hall functioning, uh, was no easy feat, and, and you've got it done, and, um, things seem to be running as smoothly as they can be, so, um, I thank you for that, and, um, tell you that I'm, I'm happy to vote, um, for this reappointment, so, um, anyone else? Okay, being, there being none, um, could I have a motion to, uh, reappoint, uh, Kevin Mizuka for the town manager for a three-year term effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023?
Yes, happy to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I enthusiastically second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Casavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, um, we, do we, is that also, um, gonna be a electronic signing, Mr. Mizuka?
Um, I don't know of which, of a document that you would need to sign, if there is one. Uh, I apologize for that. I think it's just the vote of the board with the contract already signed and in place. Um, if there is a document, we will route it appropriately electronically. And I'll just take the opportunity to thank the board for their kind comments, and, um, obviously, it's easy to work under your, your leadership and direction, and I appreciate all the support that I receive from you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll move on to our next item of business. Um, Mr. Mizuka, um, you're going to make a short presentation on, um, the financial impact of this crisis?
Yes, I, uh, will plan to share my screen, um, so everyone can see the presentation. Um, I'll be sharing a PowerPoint presentation, uh, with you, and it may take a second to come up. And, um, I will begin, and I will try to give the board an opportunity by pausing at various locations. If there are any questions, um, please just speak up, and, um, I'll do my best to answer them as we go through. I want to, um, be diligent and thorough as I can be, um, but throughout the course of this presentation, I want to stress one thing is that there's still a lot of uncertainty. Um, we're still, unfortunately, very early on in this process, and this process, as everyone knows, is certainly unprecedented. Um, I'll start off by, uh, providing an overview of the direct impact on town operations at this point, as we can see them. I'll, uh, review, uh, a quick recap of the impact on revenues and expenditures for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 20, and I'll, I'll reach forward into fiscal year 21, uh, with some revenue forecasts based upon the, um, most recent two recessionary periods, um, that the state and the town and the nation have experienced in the early 2000s, the dot-com bubble, and, um, the events of September 11th, 2001, and of course, the Great Recession from the 2008, uh, timeframe. And, um, I'm going to also reiterate throughout the course of this, uh, presentation that, um, again, th- these are all based upon those prior models and best estimates. Um, every day and, and every week and every month that we receive more data, uh, both from a virus perspective and a financial perspective with regards to revenue and expenditures in fiscal year 20 is a new data point for us to consider and reconsider our, our position. Um, and as we move forward in agenda items this evening, I think scheduling the annual town meeting as late as possible under the current, uh, state legislation will provide us with the best opportunity to either, uh, put a budget in place for fiscal year, uh, 21, as we normally would, or make another determination that we should take advantage of other opportunities to provide, uh, that give us the opportunity to, um, submit appropriation requests, uh, or a 1/12 budget to the Department of Revenue and allow them to authorize that outside the approval of town meeting. Um, and should data not be present and, um, there be more uncertainty in the numbers than, uh, there is certainty, I think we'd be in a better position to delay the decision-making rather than being overly aggressive, uh, one way or another in our cuts or the amount of revenue that we actually anticipate. So with regards to, um, the direct impact on the town, uh, everyone knows that schools have been closed for onsite instruction since March 13th. Uh, town buildings, facilities have been closed to the public since March 16th, and there's 161 positive cases within the town of Shrewsbury, and that number has increased over the last seven-day period over any prior seven-day period. Um, the, the town-wide, statewide, nationwide impact, um, of this event is unprecedented. Almost every sector has been impacted. Every sector of the private economy has had been impacted, and that's not necessarily the case in every prior recessionary period, which tended to have a trend or a disproportionate effect on, on a certain sector or industry. Um, unemployment levels, uh, within the state are rapidly growing and are well into the double digits. Um, and while the town of Shrewsbury normally fares a few tenths to up to 1% better than the Commonwealth, um, certainly even at 1% better, we are a, an unprecedented high level of unemployment within the community, which certainly has a trickle-down effect on, um, the economy under normal circumstances, but with, uh, the economy being artificially shut down, so to speak, for the benefit of public health and the good of all, um, it has an even more severe impact. Uh, of course, uh, locally, we have instituted through the Board of Selectmen taxpayer relief initiatives that are well, uh, deserved and, uh, appropriate for these times, which will, uh, allow the delay of, of payments to be made, payments or revenue to the town, and that will further complicate, um, our ability to properly project, um, where FY 20 will end and how FY 20 will begin. But again, every day is, is better. Uh, with further uncertainty, we all, uh, agree, um, I certainly am an advocate and echo the governor and other state leadership's comments that the virus will dictate the timing. The last thing that we want to do is reopen the town and the economy, um, too soon and have to close it. Um, not only do we confuse the economy, but we lose, uh, the trust of the public in our decision-making, um, and I worry about that, um, very, very much so. The state budget process, um, you know, really fortunate to have, uh, almost daily conversations with Representative Kane. The state budget process is certainly delayed, and it's certainly a high level of uncertainty of, you know, when numbers will be able to be produced. It's not for a lack of work, uh, by the Ways and Means Committee, um, that Rep. Kane's on, or any other part of the state, but they are struggling with, with timing and, and making sure they make the right decision at the right time. Well, that will certainly impact our ability to make decisions, and then how will we recover? Will it be a V where we, you know, rocket to the bottom of, you know, uh, a low point in the economy and rapidly regain? Uh, will we see, uh, the unfortunate events of a new wave of the virus where the economy will be closed and then reopen? And, you know, um, the model will move up and down over the next, uh, 12 to 18 to 24 months. Will there be a prolonged trough at the bottom, um, either through a, a more of a U shape, or even worse, an L shape in, in the economic curve that we see coming in the future? Uh, so, so this uncertainty plays into the approach that we've taken. Um, again, we've used models based on the prior recessionary periods. We've attempted to look at state and national data on unemployment and hear what the state is predicting and seeing in their revenue estimates. And we need to move forward, as I said, with an incremental mindset as we go through this presentation tonight and make decisions into the future. For fiscal year 2020, uh, with regards to revenue, um, as I mentioned, we will have, um, delayed timing in the receipt of revenues, but we also have a benefit of timing and that, um, a silver lining is that, you know, this occurred within the, you know, the end of the third quarter of our fiscal year. Uh, so we have roughly, you know, 70 to 75% of revenue already in hand. Um, and certainly now, as we've, uh, moved towards the end of April, we've essentially committed and, and, um, committed all of our, um, all of the, uh, bills out to taxpayers, whether they be motor vehicle excise or real estate taxes, uh, so we know what we anticipate receiving. Now, it will be, um, uh, up to, um, what we actually receive to, to determine what the impacts are going to be. Um, with regard to the tax levy, municipalities like Shrewsbury that rely on property taxes as a primary revenue source have historically fared better, better in recessionary periods. And further, we know that roughly 60% of Shrewsbury taxpayers pay their tax bill through an escrow company, um, you know, associated with a mortgage, and they make those taxpayer, ta- tax payments you know, associated with a mortgage and they make those taxpayer, tax payments technically on a monthly basis and it gets remitted to us quarterly. So that gives us a strong confidence since we're three quarters of the way through the year. We know that the tax collection rate to date is, you know, 73% of what we would receive throughout the course of the entire year, as you see in the chart below. We, you know, on the average year, we're collecting somewhere around 99 to 101% of revenues and we, we exceed what's committed in an annual basis at sometimes because back taxes are paid throughout the course of the year as people get caught back up with their personal finances. But unfortunately, based upon the data that we have in hand and at least the delay in the obligation to pay with, without penalty through the final day in June, we are estimating a reduced collection rate of just a little over 97%, which does have a, you know, significant impact of a little over $2 million. I apologize that that's sitting on the screen there. And the amount of money that we'll collect. So that certainly will impact free cash and as a lot of ebbs and flows and revenues does with the financial model that, that we use here in the town. Continuing on revenue, good news, state aid, including a conversation through a group conference call with the Commissioner of Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Revenue and the Lieutenant Governor. There is no indication of any mid-year reductions from state aid. We heard from the Commissioner of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that they have the funds and the grants in hands that have been committed for the fiscal year from the state's municipalities. So I am forecasting no impact. We have received our first three payments. We received state aid quarterly and our final payment is due around the middle of June for this fiscal year. The final area of revenue for discussion for FY 20 is local receipts. And as we always talk about and the board is well aware, local receipts, we have pretty much the most discretion over our estimates with over the property tax. But there's also some very volatile areas within local receipts. For instance, investment income that relies upon safe and reliable equity investments in the stock market and economic type activities of consumers like motor vehicle purchases, hotel motel occupancy, motor vehicle, or excuse me, and meals purchases. So obviously, some of those sectors and aspects are significantly impacted by COVID-19. And therefore, we are anticipating a rather significant reduction in local receipts for fiscal year 21. You'll recall in our budget and revenue model, we've projected just a little less than 11.6 million. Through the end of March, we've collected 9.6 million. We are about halfway through the collection of the first motor vehicle excise tax commitment, which was well over $4 million. And as of March 31st, if I was to do and I did a projection for the remainder of the fiscal year, we were on pace to bring in about 13.1, 13.2 million dollars in local receipts revenues. However, given the circumstances that we're in, I'm now projecting that we'll receive just less than $12 million. So the good news is, is we had a conservative estimate at the beginning of the year, which we always do. The good news is that we will likely achieve that budget mark that we have established for this fiscal year. So we will not be in a deficit situation as far as local receipts go. But the bad news is the delta from the revised estimate to what would have been without the impacts of this of over $2.2 million, excuse me, $1.2 million is something that we would have ultimately went to free cash and we would have relied upon and used in the future to increase our stabilization funds or make capital improvement purchases and maintain our overall reserves of the community, both for fiscal stability and investment in ourselves when it comes to capital improvements. So the good news that, that will achieve budget is, is short-term good news. The longer term bad news, in my opinion, and not producing that $1 million in additional free cash is going to have a significant impact on the town in fiscal year 21 and for a few years beyond that. So I can pause right here just briefly and see if there's any questions with regard to revenue for fiscal year 20 before I move into expenditures.
One quick question.
Yes.
This is all based on the economy going back to somewhat normal by the beginning of June?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to expenditures. I'm also happy to report that the immediate direct COVID-19 impact on town expenditures is not substantial. There certainly is more expenditures in some areas, less expenditures in other areas, which I'll get to in a minute. We again have the, the great fortune of being a part of the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance. Not only do we receive outstanding professional support from Karen Clark and Dr. Michael Hirsch and their staff at the City of Worcester in managing the pandemic for the town. But the City of Worcester is absorbing a lot of costs that they'll ultimately be reimbursed for. If we weren't part of that regional district or regional health group, you know, this would have been a little bit different as we would have been forced to front more costs than we otherwise would have. Also, at this point in time, we've received an initial grant through the City of Worcester using state trust funds, health trust funds of a little over $26,000. And we will apply that to overtime that we are experiencing in some areas to manage public outreach, to manage response, to manage the purchase of personal protective equipment. And also to augment Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services' ability to assist individuals and families who have COVID-positive members on both their physical and mental health. So we're happy that we receive those funds and we are putting them to good use and that will further mitigate the expense impact for fiscal year 20. We are also diligently tracking and managing expenditures related to ongoing activities in our response to this and will seek the appropriate federal and state reimbursement when those opportunities become available to the town. We put spending restrictions in place right away. We moved immediately to non-discretionary spending only. Even if it was allocated and authorized through town meeting, I provided strict guidelines on our existing purchase order policy. That means no department can make a purchase of $300 or more without my direct sign-off on those, on those purchases and we're strictly enforcing that. During fiscal year 20, early in the month of April, I asked departments to review a number of areas within their departments to determine if there would be any cost avoidance or cost savings because of the change in operations from normal conditions. And there certainly is, and as of April 4th, we estimated the impact to be about a quarter of a million dollars for fiscal year. This is just town side. And we will certainly revisit that at least on a monthly basis. You know, I will be sending out another directive at the beginning of next week to update those figures, primarily driving that $250,000 number. A lot of departments have identified things like travel and training that they will not be able to attend and other smaller reductions. But the largest area is the suspension of our contracted cleaning services for town buildings since there, most of the schools are only occupied in the administrative areas. Town hall has a fraction of the staff that it normally does. The senior center nearly has only meals, proper meals on wheels being coordinated through it. And the library is down to just a few hours per week of in-staff service. So we've suspended those contracted cleaning services. And we're managing the cleaning of buildings through our own direct staff and the custodians are doing a wonderful job. And we're also anticipating a significant reduction in the cost of operating our buildings, mainly the schools which fall under the town budget. So we'll see utility savings there immediately. Public Buildings Director Keith Baldinger set the building setbacks to pretty much weekend mode, seven days a week, which really saves on utility usage. So I do anticipate over an average year about 15% greater in unexpendited appropriations or turnbacks, which will help contribute to the total amount of free cash that is certified. But it certainly won't offset the 1.1, 1.2 million dollars in costs that we won't, or in revenue that we won't receive. I'll take it just a second here for a little sidebar about free cash. Our lower revenue collections will impact the future certified balance, reduce delayed property taxes and stunted local receipts, as we've already talked about. And in 2017, in our most recent rating by Moody's, before we transferred to Standard and Poor's in 2019, Moody's said, quote, "The town's reliance on free cash as its primary reserve is very concerning because it must be able to continue to replenish free cash year over year to maintain its reserve levels." So that hauntingly is coming to fruition here in 2020, where we're not going to be able to continue to produce free cash as we would have normally anticipated to be able to do so. So the Board of Selectmen had the foresight in November of 2018 to begin to switch the reserve policy and the model that we use as a town and to rely upon stabilization as our primary reserve and not free cash. So unfortunately, we have not achieved our 5% stabilization funding level and we are, we are well on our way to doing so on a very short-term basis, which is great news. But FY 20 and future years will certainly impact free cash and our ability to accomplish those new policy objectives on the original timeline that the board had set. So moving on to fiscal year 21, again, significant uncertainty and time becomes our ally as we move through this process. I heard at the testimony to the House Ways and, well, the Joint Ways and Means Committee between the House and the Senate several weeks ago, that this is quote unquote, "an economic coma." So many recessions were caused unintentionally and because of the public health concerns, the, the, most of the entire world economy was put into an economic coma purposely for the public good. We did utilize recessionary models from the early 2000s, which I've touched upon. And again, those were very sector oriented. It wasn't the entire economy as we're seeing here on a more widespread basis. So uncertainty kind of reigns as we move forward and look for fiscal year 21. So for three main revenue categories, the tax levy, mainly new growth, state aid and local receipts, I've modeled those different revenue areas, both, both on the early 2000 recession and the Great Recession. So on the left side of the screen here, you see new growth characterized or modeled after what happened on a percentage by percentage basis in the early 2000s. So if the same trend occurred from fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 24, as it did from fiscal year 2001 through fiscal year 2003, this is what we could anticipate for new growth. So in fiscal year 20, we had $1.1 million in new growth. The 2000 model would show $1 million in new growth in fiscal year 21. But the Great Recession model, which had a greater impact on real estate and property values, would show $631,000 is what we should anticipate in fiscal year 21. Obviously, there's a great discrepancy in these models, but you can see obviously trending, even if it is as good as the 2000 model, is still quite concerning. The one benefit that we do have from new growth is that we're always very conservative at this part in the, at this point in the budget process with new growth. And fiscal projection one, we had $808,000 in there. So I'll get to my actual projections in the future. We just use these models to try to give us a range to begin to understand what the impacts could like and look like in future years. So moving on to state aid, all three of these charts, I modeled state aid in three different ways. These are all the early 2000s model and there's quite an anomaly there in that both the education aid and the net state aid, which is the state revenue minus the state charges, bringing us to net state aid. Both of those state aid categories actually continue to increase throughout the early 2000s recessionary period. But you'll see in the top left corner, general government aid did not. So let me just explain the, the chart to the left, which I should have did in the previous period. On every slide, you'll see a dark gray line, which is the forecast without COVID-19, which is the, based upon a five-year moving average of the past five years. So, and then the colored line is that revenue using whatever model that we're talking about, whether it's the early 2000s model or the Great Recession model. So you'll see that if we're use the early 2000s model for education aid or net state aid, we'd be predicting more money and that's obviously not a good idea. But there is a significant impact that you see on general government aid in the early 2000s recession that would show that we'd be receiving upwards of a half a million dollars less in general government aid in fiscal year 21 if that model were to come to light. So on the screen now is the, using the Great Recession model as a trend for state aid. The top left corner is now education aid. And you will see that if we use the Great Recession model comparing to the gray line, where we'd have seen very incremental increases based upon the recently adopted new education funding, we are likely to see a downturn. Now, state aid is, is very different than the other revenue categories. The other revenue categories are either economically driven or formulaically driven. There's a lot of policy and decision-making that goes on from kind of a human perspective whenever we look at state aid. It's the policies and priorities of the Commonwealth. It's strong commitment to education and other aspects, you know, you know, policies are driven. You know, the ultimate policy document is your budget and where you spend your money is where you have high policy priorities. And that's certainly true. So while we may see a greater decline in general government aid based upon the Great Recession model, year over year in recession, recession, education aid, which is much larger, 20 million versus 3.3 million, it fares much better even in recessionary periods. So that is a good thing for the town, although those impacts that you see on the screen, knowing how challenging the fiscal year 21 budget process has been year-to-date, with an increase in state aid, no decline is going to be very easy to tolerate for our budget. And then again, net state aid, what you'll see here on the screen is really a reduction of money year over year for the next three consecutive fiscal years based upon this Great Recession model. And those reductions are substantial, nearly 10% in some year, some years over year. So I will get to recommendations in one second, which is after the Schedule A receipt models, which are on the screen now. The left side of the screen is the early 2000s model, total receipts. Water has obviously been excluded from these calculations and the, and the models to make sure that they are as accurate as possible. But there's no good news for local receipts. But there's no good news for local receipts. So both the 2000s model and the Great Recession model show significant reductions in local receipts. Again, consumer-based economic activity indicates how much money that we receive from local receipts and investment returns on our general investments. So we can anticipate a significant decline. In both of these models, I've called them modified because I'm using my 11.9 million dollar actual local receipt projection for fiscal year '20 rather than what the first year of those economic downturns would have otherwise dictated. Because I think I'm rather confident in that 11.9 million dollar number. So I'll now try to consolidate these numbers into a cohesive document and try to show a range of impacts that we may work from and anticipate. So this is a summary of taxation, state aid and local receipts, which comprise the lion's share of our, our revenue and drive our expenditures on an annual basis. Just for a reminder, roughly 140 million dollars in annual expenditures, a little more than that. And these revenue categories are upwards of 120 million dollars of that 140 million dollars that we spend on an annual basis. So taxation across the top, which is our general property and, and real estate and personal property tax. I am still, I see no impact on that. We're allowed to estimate 100% collection as we do year-over-year. And this estimate continues to use the, the provisions of Proposition 2.5 for fiscal year '21. Across the top, you'll see the fiscal year '20 budget, the fiscal projection one for 2001, which was fully presented to the Board of Selectmen and on to Finance Committee hearings in the month of February and March. And then fiscal FP2A, B and C are, provide a range of good, bad and ugly options for what revenues may look like with FP2A being the lowest revenue produced and FP2C being the highest revenue produced and B being the average of the two. Within new growth, as I previously stated, we had originally had $808,000 in fiscal projection one, and I would revise that down. Projection 2C, I do have $808,000. Again, we have the extreme luxury of being very conservative with our new growth throughout the entire spring aspect of our budget process and normally make adjustments based on actuals once we have them at a special town meeting in the fall. The exempted tax levy is 11, is levy that is allowed to be raised above and beyond the provisions of Proposition 2.5 for debt service. There is no change projected from fiscal projection one throughout the rest because we're obligated to meet our debt service requirements through state law. State aid, so we provide a range of state aid that, that shows a decrease of 6% to 10% in total state aid with a range of roughly 1.3 to 2.2 million dollars in reduced aid. There's certainly ability to manage and tweak and revise all of these. And we certainly will continue to do that. I had a great conversation this morning with Superintendent Sawyer and Mr. Collins. And so we'll certainly be looking at these numbers. And again, this is one aspect that I really think that we need to be conservative and wait to see what at least the early numbers are that come out of the House Ways and Means budget before I'd be comfortable in, in making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen on what the fiscal year full '21 budget would look like. Schedule A receipts, some may go back to the, to the charts that, and graphs that I've provided before and say, well, your Schedule A receipts are even lower than you predicted within the charts. And, and that's absolutely correct. Again, we're so early in this process. We've heard time and time again that unemployment is at unprecedented levels. We know that it's at unprecedented levels. In some instances, it's double than what it was during the Great Recession. The, the peak in, you know, nationwide in the Great Recession was, was 10% unemployment. It, you know, is now close to 20% nationwide. If I have my numbers right, that's the latest that I've heard statewide. It's certainly in the double digits. Shrewsbury was at 7.4% unemployment in January of 2010, which is the latest numbers that I could get. At January of 2020, we were 2% unemployment. So certainly economic activity is going to have an heavy impact on Schedule A receipts. And I'm very conservative with these estimates at this point because the last thing I want to do is get far into the fiscal year and have too much revenue in there and have to make mid-year changes if we do pass an annual budget. So, and, and one of the hardest predictors in Schedule A that we talked about every year is that motor vehicle excise tax commitment that represents about $6 million of our local, you know, of our, you know, 10 or 11 million dollars in local receipts. And that commitment doesn't go out until early February. So it's very challenging to predict local receipts even mid-year. So you'll see the, the totals above. I'll move to the next slide. Sorry, I could have highlighted those. Comparison to fiscal projection one, you know, so, so this essentially is what I would call, if we didn't make any changes to the expenditures which planned in the budget, which obviously we have, you know, this is the gap that we're looking to close, somewhere between nearly $4 million and $2.6 million in less revenue for fiscal year '21 based upon all caveats, footnotes and contingencies that I've already mentioned. And that would be a reduction on the brightest side of 2.8% of revenue. And I don't even want to call it a worst-case scenario because I really don't know if it is upwards of 3.13% through the fiscal projection 2A model. Further context, in comparison to fiscal year '20 budget, there's still a slight increase year-over-year from fiscal year '20 to '21. But I'll quickly take that away. If you simply hold the new exempted tax money that goes towards solely towards debt service and can't be spent on anything, if you hold that constant, you'll see a year-over-year decline in fiscal projection 2A and 2B of 0.6% and 0.09%. So those percentages aren't large numbers to start with. But considering on a good year, we receive about, you know, 3% additional revenue year-over-year. You know, so this is, you know, exponentially less revenue, even though the, the individual percentages aren't that great. You know, we struggle, we see a trend in increasing municipal budgets, including the schools of somewhere around 3.5% to 5.5% year-over-year. So when you're decreasing revenue year-over-year, you're not seeing that growth. And so you're seeing a swing of, you know, upward of 6% difference year-over-year. So based upon what you could call a normal year. So prior to my recap, I will again just pause. Sorry, I went through that very quickly. I can go back to any slide if there is any questions from the board.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment, if I may.
Sure.
So one other thing that's not reflected here, I think that the modeling is, it's a fluid situation. And then this presents best data that we have now. The other thing I was thinking of is that's not here, that we wouldn't have it, but is also a special education circuit breaker that wouldn't be reflected here, but it's a quasi-revenue amount on the school side. And in the Great Recession, while I think in the '21 school budget, it's assumed to be 70%, 74% and fiscal 0, fiscal 10, it was 40%. So that was one area 10 years ago that was drastically reduced. So there's been no determination made as of yet, but that's all some, also something out there that, that is, as a community, we may have to deal with and we don't know now. And that was the area that was the main challenge that we had year-over-year. In addition to Chapter 70 decreases, but that was backfilled by stimulus funds. But the, the main area, another risk that I see in addition to all of this is the special education circuit breaker. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kane.
Continuing along the line of the actions taken to date by the manager and building off of John's comment, I would simply urge the manager to do what he can daily and weekly when he identifies savings to take full advantage of that as soon as we can, because as we all know, once that dollar is spent, you can't get it back. Secondly, I would encourage him to not feel rushed on solutions. We have a very dedicated town meeting. I suspect they are all ready to do whatever they need to do. So rather than feeling under the gun for the annual town meeting or some town meeting, I for one, we're expecting several special town meetings as we go through. And I think it's important that the manager understand, provided that you folks agree with this assertion, that we stand with him, that he's, you know, save the money where you can, but don't feel compelled to run to town meeting with something that's half-baked. We can do plenty of special town meetings over the rest of the year to continue to do what the manager has done to date, which is to get it right as opposed to get it done quickly. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yep, I, I agree with that. And I think from my discussions with Mr. Mizikar, that I think that's the route that we're heading. Cautious, trying to let numbers mature and just taking, looking at it long-term, but taking small bites at a time. So we can do, because the federal government and the state government are going to have a big impact on this. And the federal money for sure, we haven't got a clue what's going to happen with. So the conservative approach, I believe, is the best way to go. It might be a little bit painful, but in the long run, I think we're going to be better off. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? So Mr. Mizikar.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was on
Mr. Lebov, sure.
I just wanted to comment and compliment the manager on this very thoughtful and extensive analysis. As we just voted to extend him, I do recall that his strength in budget development was something that the board that hired him was quite impressed with. And I think tho, those members continue to be, as, along with the members who weren't involved with that process. So job well done, Kevin.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Ms. Cassman?
I just wanted to make a comment as well. I wanted to thank Mr. Mizikar for his continued efforts to present us with some sort of budget document. There have been so many iterations over the past few weeks. And I agree with what Mr. Kane had said, that it's more important to let the numbers mature. And I don't want to see Mr. Mizikar become frustrated with trying to get something out there and then having it changed literally like 10 minutes later. I think it's a great, it was a great thinking to look back at difficult times in the past that we've experienced, but there's really no way to know what it's going to look like with something like this because we've never been here before. And so I just want to make sure that Mr. Mizikar understands that I think he's doing an excellent job giving us information that's up to date to the best of his knowledge. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? So Mr. Mizikar, from here, where, what, what are you, what are you thinking? Let the numbers mature, adjust as, as you go along? What, what about looking forward to a, to a town, to a potential town meeting, the end of June? What, what, what is your, your thought on the process of developing the '21 budget?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So we will begin from a staff level of rebudgeting. And we will run a couple scenarios perhaps based off of these models so that we're able to act. As I mentioned before, I will strongly urge that we do not move forward to a town meeting if we do not have mature enough information from the state. Because I think we would be better off taking advantage of the 112 budget or incremental budgeting that's been afforded to us through the special provisions of the legislature this year than we would making decisions and echoing what the board has said and, and, you know, rushing to conclusions. So without really having strong numbers from the state aid standpoint, I think that we, we're going to need to hold off. That being said, we will begin to move forward and, and find options to reduce expenditures. I don't think, well, I know the budget isn't going to look anything like this. And I'm going to urge innovation and creativity among our staff. Now's the opportunity to find ways to consolidate operations, reduce more silos and find greater efficiencies. We can't let whatever opportunities this crisis presents pass us by to continue to provide the best value to the residents. I, I do have on the screen rainy day. It's certainly a rainy day. It's a monsoon. There's no doubt about it. So we'll definitely look at what we had planned to move to stabilization and reconstitute that likely as a revenue source for this coming fiscal year. There's no sense of putting money in the rainy day fund when it's pouring outside. So we'll do our best to get ourselves in the best position to be able to react to some of the final data that we get in. I, I'll be asking for revenue reports from the Treasurer's Office on a bi-weekly rather than monthly basis going forward. As I said, as I said earlier, knowing what April's local receipts revenues are going to look like. And then every two weeks thereafter, after will really help us shape those local receipts numbers. I mean, you, you, we want to hit the sweet spot. And unfortunately, this year, as Mr. Kane had said, I think we're going to have to consider adopting budgets, whatever we call them, even if it's an annual budget, but it's going to have to be an incremental mindset of a quarter-by-quarter basis as we see what targets we're hitting and what targets we're missing and, and, and make changes as we need to. I'll likely increase flexibility by also increasing the amount of money that is allocated within the reserve funds to make sure that, even though we can get to town meeting quickly, we only have to do so when, when it's necessary. So we'll continue to keep the budget or the board updated on our budget progress. And I would encourage you to continue to take the, the steps that we'll talk about under the next items towards setting a town meeting date, but not formally doing so at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so our next water of business actually is to review the timeline for a potential town meeting to be scheduled before the end, end of June, which is currently what the law allows. We, we don't know if, depending on what happens when they stop loosening up the economy and, and opening up businesses, if things will change. But right now, it's June 30th, we, we are required to have a town meeting. So at least by then. So Mr. Mizikar, you have a schedule laid out?
I do. Mr. Chairman, at this point, we're recommending June 22nd, town meeting be, June 22nd be held as a tentative date for town meeting. With that date in mind, the Planning Board public hearing is scheduled for May 7th. But we're going to encourage the Planning Board to delay their actual public hearing until their meeting in June, which is again in advance of the June 22nd date. That will provide us hopefully many more opportunities, even if it's just the Planning Board all sitting in the same room together, even if they can't have public in person and that's done virtually, that's still better. At your next meeting on May 12th, we will bring a revised draft warrant back to you. And we'll continue to update the town on the likelihood that a meeting would occur on June 22nd. At your following meeting on May 26th, we propose that the Board of Selectmen would sign a warrant. The, the number of articles in that warrant would certainly be determined between now and then. There's one theory that if we're going to have the town meeting, do as much as possible because it would be extraordinary measures that would be taken to distance folks. And then the other thought would be just to do a thinner warrant and deal with matters in the fall or at a later date, and we'll work on that, a couple of models. Assuming a June twenty second meeting, we'd have, we would propose and work with the Finance Committee to hold two public hearings if two are required on May twenty seventh and May twenty eighth. Town meeting packets would be sent to town meeting members on June ninth. The Board of Selectmen would make recommendations on warrant articles that same day. There'd be a pre-town meeting on June eighteenth. And again, the town meeting tentatively June twenty second.
Okay. Any questions, comments from members of the board? I will just comment that the moderator, Mr. Mainer, has been working very hard with the Moderators Association. Staff has had a couple of meetings or discussions with them moving forward of what might be feasible in terms of a town meeting. And later on, down under correspondence, maybe talk a minute about looking into having remote meetings similar to this, but on a larger scale, which may not be something for this year, but it's something to look into. So Mr. Mainer is working with other moderators. He's learning from them and it'll be a big help to make a decision of how we'll proceed with town meetings. And Mr. Mizikah has experience with town meetings where they're split into two locations. And so we've got some expertise there. And in any event, there's all those discussions going on at the same time. So but we'll have to see how that goes. Is everybody hearing me okay? Okay, because I just got an email from somebody that they said they couldn't, or a text that they couldn't hear. Okay, is there anything else on town meeting? Okay. The next order of business is to review and act on appointing one associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for one year term to expire on March thirty first. My sense is that we probably should hold this again because I, I mean, the board can tell me, but I don't, I don't think that a majority of the board is ready at this point because of things that are going on in their license and not being able to do the research on this that they want. So anybody have any feeling one way or the other? No?
Mr. Chairman.
No.
Chairman, I'm happy to wait if, until other members, all members of the board are prepared to vote.
Okay, thank you. Did somebody else want to make a comment? No? Okay, then we'll just carry this forward to the May twelfth meeting. There's not a meeting of the zoning board again till the end of, end of May. So it's not affecting anything at this point. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll go through correspondence. Item nineteen is an email dated April tenth from David Snowden, DPW Business Manager, regarding waste and recycling update, regarding actually the waste management trucks. The dual collection trucks are, they finally arrived and they're in service. And the expectation is that after a couple of weeks of the, of the drivers and management of waste management, getting the schedule down, the routine down, that the thing should flow a lot more smoothly. So that's what that is. Item, item twenty is an email dated April tenth from Carlos Garcia, Ten Pond Ave, regarding Billy's Pub Clothing Deposit Bins. Writing that apparently there's been a mess over there. I think staff has already worked to address that. Is that correct, Mr. Mizikah?
Yeah, actually, both bins were removed from the site today, so we're happy about that.
Good, thank you. Item twenty one is an email dated April tenth from Michael Marcy, fifty-two Long Meadow Road, regarding trash and recycling pickup. Mr. Mizikah, you followed up on that also? Have you had somebody follow up on that?
Yep, we've, we've followed up on all trash and recycling complaints that are on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item twenty two is an email dated April fourteenth from Representative Kane regarding the economic outlook. There was a study done by the Mass Taxpayers Foundation for the legislature where they were predicting a fourteen percent decrease in revenues, which equates to four point four billion dollars in the next fiscal year. Item twenty three is an email dated April sixteen from Sandra Wright, Town Clerk. Notice from the Attorney General regarding town meeting. I think we said on that. So noted, item twenty four, email dated April sixteen from Sandra Wright, regarding questions about municipal elections. So noted, item twenty five is an email dated April sixteen from Representative Kane regarding FY twenty one tax transfer analysis. But the main gist of that letter was how MBTA and the Mass School Building Authority would be affected. And fortunately for us, it looks like short term, the MSBA will have the funding they need to continue with projects that are in place. But down the road, projects, new projects might get delayed. So noted, item twenty six is an email dated April sixteen from Dana Doha, Farmican, one ninety, South Lasalle Street, Chicago, Illinois, regarding licenses that were needed. Mr. Mizikah, you talked to them and they're all set for what they need?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Item twenty seven is an email dated April sixteen from Sandra Wright, Town Clerk. Information about municipal elections. Interestingly enough, I saw that there was a question if you could have drive-through voting. I guess you go to Dunkin' Donuts, you get your coffee and you can vote at the same time. Not allowed in Massachusetts, but there was an article in the paper that a town in Vermont is actually going to try it. Not necessarily with the donuts, but still drive-through voting. Item twenty eight is an email dated April nineteenth for myself to the board about remote town meetings. There is legislation that's moving through the State House to allow for this. Mr. Mainer, myself, Kristin Last, John Covey, had a, had a discussion of what the issues were, what was available for technology, et cetera. I think the consensus of the group was that this is not ready for us to use, at least not, not before the end of June. There's too many questions and we're not sure the technology that's involved. However, I will tell the board that Jason Powich and Mr. Mainer and I had a discussion regarding the Democratic State Convention, which they did completely by remote participation, had approximately three hundred people. And they had support mostly for volunteers. But the consensus was that they did have adequate technology. They also had the staff and the support from actually Zoom to make it happen where they actually were doing votes that could be recorded. And so Mr. Mainer is looking more into that, but it's still, the timeline might be too quick for us, so just to let you know. And item twenty nine is a letter dated April twenty fourth from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager, to Mr. Mizikah regarding street sweeping. It's going along well. I saw the truck, the sweepers and the trucks out today. So, okay, is there anything else that anybody wants to address before we adjourn? Okay, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cassaman.
Aye.
Mr. Lebov.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye, good evening.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo, aye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.